So yes, this is the West LA Democratic Club, fifth in our series of candidate forums this cycle. Be prepared for the next cycle after the primary into the general. So I'm Cara Robin, I'm president of the club. And on behalf of our board, I just want to welcome everyone. I'd like to just say hi to the board so you all know who we are. Let's see, I can't let me get into gallery view myself. I say Ingrid, want to raise your hand? Ingrid Van Eckert, she's our political vice president, or I'm sorry, Ops Vice President. Brad Naruzi, who is going to be the timer today, and he's our tech, our Zoom tech. He's our political vice president. I'm looking down and walk going around here. Mark Salzburg, member at large, former president. Who am I missing? I can't see everybody. I can't see everybody, but that's what I see. If anybody else is on, please just let me know and I'll introduce you. There are also some candidates I see that are not today's. I see Heidi Felsting Soto running for city attorney. Heidi, raise your hand. Chelsea Byers, Chelsea, what are you running for?
West Hollywood City Council.
Best Hollywood City Council, thank you. Well, Lindsay, of course. Lindsay, who we will hear from in a minute. Anyone else who is a candidate? Crystal List is here representing, I'm sure lots of candidates. Right, Crystal, you have, I'm sure you have judicial candidates, yes?
I have many judicial candidates.
We'll be talking. Okay, so I think that's it for the candidates I see if anyone else. Oh, and Ari's here, Ari Ruiz, who's representing. We should be on to Robert Pullen Miles, running for Assembly District 6162. And I think that is it for that right now. There's lots going on, of course, and one of the big thing is our celebration of our newest associate justice, Supreme Court Justice Katanji Brown Jackson, which is so amazing. And you know, really a first and I'm so happy. It was like, I'm so happy she prevailed because it was so ugly and so unfair, you know? And you've got someone that run rings, circles around every other recent justice. And yeah, good on her. And then, of course, I do want to do our or maybe 10 minutes or 10 seconds, shall I say, of sending, sending our thoughts and energy to these people, these poor people in Ukraine who are just, every day, it's another devastation, every day. We see these, these images that really are just horrific. So just a minute. Please send it out. Every positive ounce of energy, we can send them communally here. Okay, thanks. Thank you. So yeah, so we have a great program today. We have great candidates. I'm really excited to get going with this. The format will be, we're going to give each of our candidates, we're going to start with the Board of Supervisors, District 3 LA County Board of Supervisors with Lindsay Horvath, West Hollywood Council Member, Lindsay Horvath, and State Senator Henry Stern, who will be our candidate speaking, and they will each have two minutes to introduce themselves, two minutes each. So we're giving them a little more time, you know, everyone, just one minute or one and a half. I don't think you get all your thoughts together, even though you've been doing this a long time. But we'll give you two minutes. You don't have to take all the two minutes, but you know, you have that. And then two minutes to close. Rad, you want to play the, our music? Rad's going to be our timer. We'll warn you at one minute. That'll be this sound. Maybe. Yeah, that's one minute and then there'll be the same sound for 30 seconds and then two bells for stop. Your time is up. Okay? And after, after the, we'll see how much time we have left. We've blocked out an hour for each portion. And if we have some time left, we can take a couple of questions from the chat. And then after that, we'll have the congressional candidates to, running to replace Karen Bass, who's not running as we know, since she's running for mayor. And the same thing, two minutes, two minutes, two minutes, and at quarter of six, the ballots will be going out. And I know I've had some complaints, oh, why are the ballots going out before they're done? And that's so that you can have them in hand. Nobody's telling you to vote before the voting closes. You know, you can wait until you hear everyone, then you vote. I'm going to shut it off at 6:15. The minute they're done, the ballots, the minute 6:15 comes, I will get the results and I will announce them to you. So that's the format. And is Henry here? Is Henry here? Oh, there he is, Henry Stern. Yes, we've got Lindsay and Henry. And let's let ladies first. So it is my pleasure to introduce you to Madam Lindsay Horvath. Lindsay, two minutes.
Thank you so much. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. Very excited to be in your company and thank you for the work that you do each and every day. And between these meetings, to make sure our democratic values are lived out each and every day in our communities. My name's Lindsay Horvath. It's an honor to serve currently as council member, former mayor of the city of West Hollywood. I've been in local government for 15 years and running for this local government seat because I have seen where the county has delivered and where it simply hasn't for us in our neighborhoods, in our communities, where that social safety net is needed the most. I, as a mayor during COVID, as president of California Contract Cities Association, which is an association of cities that contract for services with LA County, I saw firsthand in a time of crisis where people needed that help. And as we look at some of our most challenging issues, housing and homelessness, community safety, getting people back to work and good jobs that afford themselves and their families a good quality of life, making good on the promises of Measures R and M and building out our regional transportation infrastructure. These are all areas, you don't have to guess what I'll do. It's my record that I'm running on in terms of delivering solutions and all of those areas and more. What we need is somebody who actually knows where to invest the county resources to make that difference. And I have continued to build a coalition that is reflective of the diversity of our district and of our county. This is not just a way I will win this election, but more importantly, it will inform how I serve as a county supervisor, listening to people in each community who will be directly impacted by our decision making and hearing directly from you what it is the county needs to do better, more or differently to serve your needs. And it is, that's how I've governed at the local level these past 15 years. It has earned me the endorsement of Supervisor Kewell, as well as over 100 local elected officials throughout the district and the county who trust me to be their liaison to deliver results for you. I look forward to our conversation today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lindsay. Henry? You, Henry?
Okay, I'm on. Okay, cool. Thank you. Cara, thank you. It's such an honor to be with the West LA Democratic Club. And to be focusing our attention on county is crucial. You know, I know that the city of LA mayoral race and city council may occupy a lot of the attention right now, as well as some of the national fights, but I would, I would argue that there's no more important race in California. And I think, I don't even think it's too bold to say in the whole country than this LA County Board of Supervisors seat. The scale and the stakes are the highest there are when it comes to COVID. We are the hotspot for climate. This is the number one disaster zone. Homelessness were one tenth of the country's population. So when you're talking about challenging the status quo and how we're tackling these issues, I think you need somebody who has experience from Sacramento, but not so much that you've learned the wrong lessons. I've only been at this about six years. I'm an environmental attorney by trade and I worked in juvenile justice before that. Lived in Santa Monica, fresh out of school and kind of grew up in the area. But you know, representing the valley and, and parts of the Santa Monica Mountains for the last six years taught me a lot about what I don't like about politics. And I don't like machine politics. I don't like dark money in politics. And I really don't like the way LA is being run right now. And I think a lot of people have had it, and I don't think it's, it's against any progressive value to say that. So I think we need to stand up as progressives and challenge the status quo, and that's what I'm trying to do. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we go into our question and answer period. Ingrid will be asking, we're going to alternate asking you questions, so you get a little. I have to tell you, it is so, it is so nice to see the two of you here, though. I mean, it's like, God, we just, we have like the best people running, you know? And we want everyone to win that we love. So you know, we're rooting for you all. Take, take that. Okay, questions. So the first question, and then Henry, why don't you start on this? Let's see. You'll be representing three very different communities in LA County. How will you balance their interests against one another?
Let's say 15 different communities. I mean, even within the West Side, we know that, you know, even right on the edge in Santa Monica is, is very different than say, what's, what's happening in the hillsides or in Beverly Hills or the Benedict Canyon is very different than Laurel Canyon. The West Side's about 30% of this seat now. It's shrunk a bit from when Sheila was, has been representing it. And it's a majority valley seat, about 60% in the San Fernando Valley. So you're talking about Pacoima, Porter Ranch, Chatsworth. Those are the areas I've represented. I mean, I represent more people in this seat than anyone else running. But I don't think it has to pit valley against West Side or the mountains against the flats. I think there's a lot of issues that bring us together. I think everyone's frustrated with the quality of service they're getting out of county when it comes to things like mental health services, the approach to homelessness and, and the lack of abundance when it comes to care on the street. So you know, follow, say, Topanga Canyon Boulevard, right? Go from the beach all the way deep into Chatsworth, where there's still cowboys and country music. And through Canoga Park, where there's, you know, 70% Latino working people. Everyone here, whether you live in the Palisades, you live in Pacoima, is wanting to solve central problems. And I think people want to pitch in more. Like, I don't think Calabasas or Malibu want to be left out of the solution. I think they want to pitch in. I think we got to come up with some creative ideas to do that, like an affordable housing trust for all the county to throw their money into. I think we can do more collectively, so I'm hoping it's not an us versus them race.
You still have 30 seconds.
Oh, good. Well, so you know, to put it all together, I think is key. And you have to show up. I think that's, that's half the battle. It's a very hard job to do well. But I think you've got to be willing to brave that 405 and love to do it on a train. Maybe we can make that happen too in this, this, through this seat. But I think that's what it's going to take. I don't think someone who says they're just West Side or they're just valley is going to win this. So I can bridge that divide.
Thank you. Lindsay?
So I, I would say that we need to not juxtapose the interests of different communities, but actually find common ground among our communities and bring communities throughout this district together. And I'm seeing that consistently as I move throughout the district. No matter where I go, the priority issues are the same. Homelessness and housing, community safety and getting people back to work and good jobs. And of course, tackling our existential threat of what's going on with our climate. But they manifest in different ways, but the themes are there. And so it's really about how do we implement at the local level the, the changes and the solutions that are going to make a difference neighborhood by neighborhood. And it's disappointing to see some in this race not, choose not to engage certain communities. I intend to serve all the parts of this district and bring us together. We shouldn't be divided by zip code or area code. That shouldn't determine the level of service you get, the quality of communication, the responsiveness of your government should not be determined by your area code or your zip code. What should be informing how you receive service is you, somebody who listens to your perspective. And it's why, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I'm building a coalition that reflects the diversity of our county. I want diverse opinions in the boardroom with me and forming my decision making. And I'm proud to be endorsed all over the district from East Valley indivisibles to the West Hollywood Beverly Hills Democratic Club, to leaders in all of the independent cities, from San Fernando to Santa Monica. We need someone who actually has those relationships on the ground that knows the people and the issues and that knows how to deliver from the county to get out money and resources out of that bureaucracy and into the neighborhoods, and most importantly, to the people who need help the most. We need to center those people who need help the most in the work that we're doing.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready for the next question? With the homeless epidemic rampant in Los Angeles, do you have a plan for lowering the cost of building homeless housing so we can build more for less?
Lindsay?
Yes, we need to work to create policies that provide affordable housing as housing is built in my community. We have an inclusionary housing policy that requires at least 20% of every development to be set aside for moderate, low and very low income people. The development of this housing means that it's happening in real time. We don't have to wait for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to reach the level of funding needed to purchase or redevelop a property, though we need to do that too. We, we need both and ways to address these problems, not either or. We also need to work with public-private partnerships with nonprofit affordable housing developers to identify ways in which we can make sure that the housing that is developed is not only affordable, but permanent and supportive, that it includes the resources people need, whether it's, you know, a connection to addiction recovery or mental health services. I've had experience doing this. When I ran in 2011, there was someone who was unhoused on the steps of my campaign office because he couldn't find housing that accepted him and his dog. I helped him navigate the very dense bureaucracy to get the resources that he needed and get connected to housing. Housing that we developed in my community that was affordable for him. And he now lives in that permanent affordable housing, very glad to say. And he's, he continues to be a partner and a, and a member of the West Hollywood community. That's what we need is somebody who has experience actually delivering housing solutions and protecting the housing that's already affordable for people. As a renter in rent stabilized housing, I'm facing these challenges myself. And so I hear from people who are renters, their concerns about the eviction moratoria coming. We need to make sure that we're keeping people in the housing that they're in, that they can afford, while we also work to create new affordable housing solutions to address all of the problems in the homelessness and housing crises. Thanks.
Want me to jump in? Okay, so according to the, the most recent studies, I think we need about 500,000 units of affordable housing in the LA County region to, to meet the scale of this crisis. I don't think there, we're going to get there by building units at $600,000 or $500,000 a pop. So we're going to have to get creative about scaling, about construction costs, about adaptive reuse of public buildings and of commercial buildings and even of industrial sites that aren't being used. I don't think we're going to get all this done with brand new greenfield development. You know, we, we've been, I also don't think we're, we're going to get there with only one type of housing. So we've been very fixated on the permanent supportive housing push. And that's what I'm thinking about for this Affordable Housing Trust that I've been working with Sydney Comlogar on and a few others up in the Capitol on SB 679. But this other class of housing that to me has to be about speed and crisis management is the kind of shelter and transition housing that just doesn't exist where there's wraparound services there too. So not enough to just have a bed at a bridge home. But you need on, in-home psychiatric care. You need proper security. You need lockers so people feel like they can have their things safe. Right now, it's sort of an all or nothing approach to housing, and I don't think we're going to get there with that. So we just, we did, you know, $38 million to buy the 818 Hotel a couple of weeks back on Ventura Boulevard. It'll be a huge step forward for the community. But what I'll say is, it's a lot of money at once. And so I think we're going to need very fast, inexpensive prefab builds at the start. And then we're going to have to take a serious look at adaptive reuse. We have a lot of commercial space I think we can do better with. So those are some of the things we've been pushing on, but it's a lot of units. And we're all going to have to pitch in and, and no one can say no. Everyone has to find their place to yes. So that's what I'd say about, about the challenge.
Okay, good. Well then, continuing on housing in another vein. Did you support SB 9 and 10? Why or why not? Henry?
I did not. I actually, and I didn't support the, the predecessors to those bills either. I think it was SB 50 and SB 1120. I think it was the only senator not to vote for SB 1120 when it came through the first time, which was the subdivision map act, split lot bill. And you know, I, I've been through a lot as a, as a renter in this district, going through disasters in fire zones, and I'm still frustrated that there's not an exemption from that legislation about development in risky, the riskiest areas in either piece of those, those bills. You can still basically McMansion out all the canyons and call that affordable housing. To me, we're not solving the housing crisis when we're adding, when we're adding high-end luxury development and calling that arena. That doesn't do it. So it was an uncomfortable position to take because I think there's a lot of important things to be done through zoning changes. So I'm not opposed to, to upzoning strategically, but I think that it was too blunt of a tool, frankly, especially in SB 9. And I'm concerned right now about what it's going to do for all the open space left in LA. The places that we know developers are going to make a lot of money, but that regular folks really aren't going to get housed. So that's the concern is that people will wave the flag of affordable housing and then line their pockets with it. And I'm really worried about displacement, gentrification, the lack of rent control more broadly. So those are the kind of belt and suspenders things that I, I would have needed to vote on, on that legislation. But yeah, it's a tough position, especially as a millennial here to, to say, I'm still a YIMBY. But that doesn't mean I had to, to vote for SB 9 or 10. So, but I'm going to keep arguing that until, until I start making some sense.
Okay, Lindsay?
Thank you. My community didn't support SB 9 and 10 because we saw some of the unintended consequences coming of a one-size-fits-all approach to housing and land use. However, we did support a lot of the goals that were stated behind those bills, including increasing availability of housing in our communities and finding ways to create inclusive housing in our, in our community. We are a city that has met arena goals. So while the state has set those goals, we've met or exceeded them and continue to do so by creating new housing options of all kinds, affordable and market rate as required by state law. And, and we need to continue to grow in ways that are safe, but in ways that are consistent with making sure everyone has the ability to live in our communities. The goals of these policies were really to, I think, take away some of the local land use authority. But I think we need to make sure that we're working within our communities to hear where some of those places like fire zones are places that housing shouldn't be developed. We need to make sure that we are meeting what the needs are, but also looking at innovative ways to address housing like optional zoning, where zoning for market rate housing is different than zoning for affordable housing, based zoning and density in, in a community. Of course, the land use authority of the county is limited only to the unincorporated areas, but certainly partnership with local communities incentivizing it with Measure H dollars, for example, to make sure that we are building the kind of housing that's needed in the neighborhoods where it's needed most is the role that the county can play in actually helping to effectuate change.
All right, next question. How will you address the inequity in the Sheriff's Department?
Lindsay?
There's so much to talk about. So I'll say, I'll start with saying, I was a supporter of Measure J. I believe wholeheartedly in the ATI Plan, and I believe that we need to invest in a system of care that actually keeps people safe. I have served as Chair of the Liability Trust Fund Claims Board and Oversight Committee. I think Lou Lamott is here, knows that pain. And I've had to firsthand deal with deputy involved incidents that come at high cost to the county and the communities that are served by the Sheriff's Department in terms of dollars and cents and community trust, and also in terms of loss of life. And so I've, I have experience dealing with the Sheriff's Department, holding them accountable, but also working together with them in ways that we can, whether it's, it was working to clear the backlog of untested rape kit evidence that the Sheriff's Department had seen many years ago. But for the effort that was grassroots, community-led, we helped to make that difference. And that happened in partnership with the Sheriff's Department. I'll work with the department where we can, but we have seen a call and a very important call for meaningful change and reform, and we've gotten a lot of lip service and not meaningful substantial change. We have to make sure that we are supporting a department that is doing the duties for which it is uniquely trained and not calling upon that department to deliver services for which they are not trained or they are not the best response. In my community, we've led with clinically trained social workers on 5150 calls, calls for people who are unhoused to make sure that we're connecting them with services and care, not jailing them for being unhoused. We need to stop the criminal punishment system and start investing in a system of care that's actually going to uplift people who need that support the most.
Okay. Go ahead. Henry?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Been working on oversight issues in public safety. Since before I got into public office, I used to work in the MAX units in Alameda County, where I dealt with incarcerated youth who really shouldn't have been in a carceral setting. The current mindset, we're, we're very much in trench battle right now, and it's not serving anybody. It's not serving the people of LA democratic process to watch the sheriff flagrantly deny his, his accountability. And to say that somehow that department is above, at least above reproach or outside of the purview of any oversight commission and that the personnel there aren't subject to the same things that a firefighter and EMT worker or other, other county workers are. I want to get back to a place where we can rebuild the culture of the Sheriff's Department to get past 18% training rates, to, to build in the diversity into the Oversight Commission too, that we've seen at places like the LA Fire Commission where we've seen incredible leadership change under a few of the people even here on this call here today. I think we're going to need to, to hold the line there. We're going to need to back Mr. Huntsman up. We're going to need to be unafraid of it. And I appreciate what the current supervisors have, have done in standing up. I will tell you, I didn't support the current sheriff's last time around, but I'm, I've, I've learned my lesson that this is not a place to, to inject too much politics because people get hurt when you get political with a public safety office like this. So I, my, my hope is to find some way to take the temperature down, to provide things like mental health services and training to the deputies and to get past this binary decision where we have to decide between funding social services and still having adequate public safety personnel watching West Hollywood go through. What it's doing is, has been hard. So thanks for the question.
Ingrid?
Cara?
Oh, me, sorry. Yeah, sorry, I was like into what you're saying. The Los Angeles City Council has a motion pending to create its own public health department. Do you believe the county of Los Angeles has done an adequate job addressing the public health needs of the city of Los Angeles? Or would you support the city creating their own public health department? Henry, why don't you start with that one?
I mean, I'm reticent about how coordination is going to work in general on delivering critical services. I mean, we've seen this happen with homelessness where, you know, city and county sort of talking past each other, and it has not been productive. I'm not trying to say that, you know, having a solid public health department within city I'm not trying to say that, you know, having a solid public health department within city wouldn't be workable, but you know, we just have to find some way that there's actually a a good division of labor there to make it work. I I think that it's been really hard in LA. I think the public health department has has ramped up and done some pretty remarkable work in terms of putting equity first and trying to deliver resources. I've been frustrated, however, that places like Canoga Park and Reseda in the sort of northwestern part of of the current supervisor district seem to have been ignored. We have no public testing sites. We didn't have good clinical work. I basically had to work through LAUSD to go help people triage and and that was really frustrating to see those little pockets of poverty in the West Valley get ignored and everyone just assume it's it's all wealthy folks. And I know that's true on the West Side too, you know, in more Vista Gardens, or if you're off Pico or wherever it may be, you know, it's not all rich people in the West Valley and on the West Side. And so I think we gotta deal with some of those inequities and maybe at a city level there can be a little more acuity to that and a little more attention to detail. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we're adding substance there. So I'm all for more political generosity, more sharing between county and city. So maybe in that spirit, embrace that partnership, but I would just say adding layers upon layers upon layers and then not getting any outcomes. People have seen a lot of that, and I think they've had it with it. So hopefully, they can do this this efficiently in a way that's actually picking up the phone and dealing with people's needs and not being forced to make, you know, life or death decisions about do I wait in line at a crowded COVID testing clinic or or do I just sit home with a virus that I don't know what's gonna do to me? Seen that happen, and it's it's been really hard. So I'm frustrated, but it's not all Dr. Ferrer's fault. It's been a hard go.
Lindsay?
Yeah, I would say Dr. Ferrer delivered in many ways during this time of crisis, and I can't imagine what it was like to be in her shoes. But I do know as a local official that I was on calls with her every week. I listened in on the business calls that she also had. And sometimes people left very frustrated without getting the information that they thought they needed for their communities to be able to be accountable to people in their neighborhoods and felt that and I and I heard from communities who felt that a one size fits all approach for all of the eighty eight cities plus unincorporated area of LA County didn't necessarily make sense. And so we we saw with Long Beach and Pasadena having their own health departments, how they were able to do things differently. I don't know that, you know, in Pasadena, it was better than than in Los Angeles. But I do know that there are ways that we can improve upon the current public health department without having to throw it out altogether. If the city of Los Angeles and the residents of Los Angeles support this effort to to understand what it would take to to develop a robust public health department with the kind of expertise and leadership that exists in the current Department of Public Health in LA County, you know, an exercise worth exploring for transparency, for accountability and for openness, but not just because you're politically frustrated. We need to make sure that we're actually implementing systems of care and supporting systems of care that keep people connected and in communication with each other. And so I would say, you know, coordination would be a concern if there are multiple new public health departments. I know the city of Beverly Hills is also exploring that. But I also think there are there are ways that we can deliver by designating point people within the public health department that are designated by region. So you're working with the same same staff on a regular basis and to address the the requests of the Department of Public Health without having to to create a whole new department somewhere else.
All right. Next question. What should the county do to support and strengthen the benefits and pay for IHSS caregivers? I believe that's in-home social services caregivers. Henry?
Pay them over poverty wages and don't make don't force people who are taking care of the people we love the most to choose between feeding their families and taking care of ours. It's completely unjust how we've funded and treated the in-home care system. I'm I'm a direct, you know, beneficiary and witness to that. I we we take care of my father-in-law. He's ninety four years old, and he was constructively evicted from a rent-controlled apartment off Third Street. I remember working with Larry Gross and trying to figure out how to stop his landlord from pushing him onto the street, but basically that was it. And he's either on the street or he's with us. And so he's with us on Medi-Cal getting in-home care and the the thought of, you know, the thought of people having to make fourteen dollars an hour, thirteen dollars an hour to do the most important work possible. That's the quiet work in the middle of the night. That's like changing a diaper that otherwise would have sat there for four hours or helping somebody take their medication or get through life. I've been pushing with SEIU twenty fifteen for the last four or five years for stronger oversight on on our in-home care system for letting Medi-Cal reimburse for in-home care on a long-term basis, which they currently don't do. It all is going to the nursing home system, which is seventy five percent for profit, right? There's a lot of money moving around the system, a lot of Medi-Cal dollars, but are we getting the outcomes we need? So I say uplift pay, up the staffing ratios and allow a broader spectrum of people to to use in-home care on a long-term basis at home. I think we can do all that in LA, and that's why twenty fifteen is behind me. And, you know, there's a lot of incredible people, mostly women of color who are driving this industry, and we gotta be more just if we actually care about the people we love.
Thank you. There is money in Build Back Better. There are state dollars available, but the most important thing we need to do is raise the wage. I've done that in my own community. We've now raised our wages to the highest in the nation because we saw when we tried to pass a wage increase several years ago, and there was resistance. We've seen how that set back our community and how that created inequities for people who were in those frontline jobs during this time of crisis and deserved to be uplifted and recognized and and supported in those jobs. And so that's why we raised our minimum wage. We worked with labor to create workplace standards that and protections that keep people safe in their workplace, especially people who are working in frontline roles and who themselves have been put at risk. We need to make sure that we are paying attention to the work that's being done in our communities. Often, you know, especially in hospitality industry and certainly in in healthcare, there are people who are making choices about whether they're going to work or or whether that will put their family at risk. And so we need to stop asking those employees to make those choices and instead invest in them and uplift them, listen to them and their lived experience and stop making them have to make those choices and instead create a system of care that also delivers for the people who are providing care. We've talked a lot about mental health support for those who are, you know, most challenged in our communities, those who have been living on our streets or and without care, but we also need to take care of the caretakers and make sure they have access to those resources and support. They've seen and lived through a lot in ways that I I can't imagine from my role, but I can only appreciate the work that they've done and make sure that we invest back in them so they can continue working in those careers that they signed up for and once left.
I have to admit, this is a huge problem, and I I mean, I'm knowing it personally. And yeah, so yeah, fix it, you guys. All right. Well, here's another. What changes would you propose, if any, to the county foster care system? Henry, you want to take that?
Sure. I mean, DCFS is another star agency, and, you know, when we talk about young people getting lost in the system, those who are homeless, those who are incarcerated, often coming out of the foster care system. That's the original destination is is kids who didn't have parents to look after them. We're trying to restore the funding there. I don't think it's enough to just blame the lack of oversight. We know there have been those tragedies this past year in foster care of kids being abused, even losing their lives. And social workers simply having caseloads that are unmanageable to be able to look after their clients. I mean, you're talking about like sixty to one, fifty to one. Imagine driving all over LA. You have fifty clients. How how well you think that's gonna go? We're putting, we're leading the fight in Sacramento to restore DCFS's budget with a two hundred million dollar push and then also having, helping folks like Project Angel Food and some of the others out there who are involved in child and family services. But there was an amazing Blue Ribbon Commission held about five years ago on on what to do to restore DCFS and how to share data and how to empower social workers more to be able to pay more attention to their clients remotely as well, so not just on-site visits to have more interaction. A lot of that has been left on the shelf. And I think it's tragic, and we're losing lives, and we're also losing lives that we won't even read about in the paper. Not those horrible cases of abuse, but the kids who slip through the cracks and who end up on the streets. So it's not just the money. It's also things like reentry housing, trying to have ongoing navigators after you age out of the system. That eighteen to twenty-five window is really everything for child and family services. That's where we really lose kids is when they're not kids anymore, but they still need help. So what's that transition look like? I think it's been a cold handoff in the county, and I I'm gonna be laser focused on it.
Well, there I think there are a lot of things we need to do because the foster care system needs to be good for every child. If we wouldn't want to see our own children in that system, it's not good enough. And so what I understand is there are about nineteen local offices throughout the county which are supposed to be an attempt at being more accessible and providing services and care to different neighborhoods. But what actually happens there is that each social worker has to maintain their own Excel sheet of resources and and support. There's no centralized database for them to turn to, and parents who are accessing those resources or going to those offices often have already been reported on, possibly had their families separated. So we need to create a system that encourages parents to come forward and ask for help, a system that actually provides that help proactively and helps families stay together and not get separated if at all possible, or if it's otherwise a safe place for children to be. And we need to make sure that we're supporting the people who are providing those resources and care. You can imagine well-resourced areas on the West Side are places where people are able to find resources quicker than, say, a center in Van Nuys. And so we need to make sure that that there is a centralized database so people can be served no matter where they are in the district, no matter where they are in the county. As we look at the issue of children, young people who are aging out of foster care, one way we can extend, in a way, the system of care is by locating housing in some of our community colleges and helping them get into academic or employment training programs at those sites and into housing so that way they are extended in a way through that system and supported and cared for by the county and not just sort of left to be on their own without any help. There are lots of ways that we can reform the the current system. It's just about making sure that we are accountable to to the results that it's delivering and who we're actually serving in that system.
Thank you. The next question is recipients of general relief currently receive a little over two hundred dollars a month. Do you think that is enough to live in on to live on in Los Angeles? If not, what would you do to change general relief?
Lindsay?
Well, certainly, two hundred dollars a month isn't something that anyone can live on in LA County. Rent alone eats that eats that up very quickly. But we need to make sure that we're providing people with a a good quality of life and affordable cost of living across the board. I initiated a guaranteed income pilot in my community, and I know the county has two such programs ongoing that are looking at how guaranteed income helps to uplift people by providing them with the resources they need and the ability to make decisions about how to spend their money to make sure that they are cared for and get the essential goods and services that they need. But we also need to make sure that we are creating affordable housing options, creating affordable transportation options or no-cost transportation options for people to get to jobs and to those essential services. But we also need to make sure that we're helping people stay in the housing that they're in, as I mentioned earlier. And another another way that we can provide assistance is by one-time grants and to people who, but for a missed paycheck, would otherwise be able to stay in their housing. There are ways to supplement the kind of the income that people have to make sure that they're able to afford where they live and to have a good quality of life. We just have to be creative about about what programs we're going to invest in and make sure that the results are actually delivering for people and not just creating a new bureaucracy. It's the people that we need to be centered on. Thanks.
So with the general relief program, you have to have, I think it's a hundred dollars or for a couple, it's two hundred, but either two hundred dollars or a hundred dollars cash on hand in order to be eligible. In other words, you can't have saved more than a hundred dollars in your bank account, or else you can't even apply to general relief. That, to me, seems too low of a threshold. There are plenty of people who can slip into catastrophic poverty into homelessness or other situations who have well over a hundred dollars in their bank account. It just takes one bad car accident or a medical tragedy or some kind of payment you owe to a debtor to take you completely out of commission. So I I'd look at the thresholds. I'd also look at some of the administrative issues when it comes to folks in the undocumented community. I think general relief is really a tough program to navigate. We've been looking at EITC, which is the Earn Income Tax Credit. There's a cash in lieu of the tax credit program. We've been working for folks who have ITINS for folks who, you know, who may not be documented but are still paying taxes because they're working here as a giant portion of our entire economy is being fueled by people who may not have the right document but put every bit of their ounce of strength into their jobs. And so to leave behind the undocumented community and GR doesn't work. I'm excited about Holly's UBI pilot. We've been working on that up in the Capitol, and I'm I'm really excited to see the results, and I wish we were doing it in the on the northwest side too. I think the valley needs it. I don't think we should just think of South LA as some place that, you know, that's all poverty is relegated there, even East LA. I mean, you look at northeast Los Angeles and Pan Am City or Pacoima, we've got to get there too. So I'd I'd like to see a pilot launched in the northeast, and I think we could do it. And look, the money's there right now. The economy is doing well from a tax perspective. It's just no one feeling bad. Everyone's getting looked on.
Yeah. Okay. The county is responsible for protecting hillside communities, controlling development and managing fires and wildlife corridors. What are your plans in addressing issues that affect hillside communities? Henry, why don't you start with that one?
Probably get into a couple tussles, maybe right out the gates, maybe already in this election. You gotta fight for the hillsides. That's the land that people want to develop. They don't want to build affordable housing, you know, off of Pico and Doheny, or they don't want to build affordable housing in Canoga Park. They want to build, you know, what Hadid's building at Franklin. They want to build, you know, giant institutes or, you know, new track developments. There's a bill moving through the legislature right now to expedite under CEQA, actually exempt from CEQA housing developments in fire zones if they tick some boxes off, because these developers look at a new whole ranch. That's big money. If you're selling that house for a million two, I don't know, again, how you're you're meeting the housing crisis. So, you know, I'd like to see us have a little more push on what city of LA is doing in the hillside communities. I'm I'm concerned with with the the current design review process there, and I think Sheila's actually done a really good job in unincorporated areas of of sort of holding back the the hungry rush for that land. She's been particularly solid there, but I don't I I don't think it's a foregone conclusion that that continues. And I think that, you know, when you think of the subsidy that Compton has to pay to Calabasas for their fire bill just to keep their community safe, it doesn't seem fair to me to cross-subsidize that way and to allow folks to run off with the money. So we're looking at, you know, zoning restrictions, SB nine implementation, rearrangements of arena, other environmental sensitive habitat, and even using the Endangered Species Act. People like to joke that the mountain lion is is, you know, just an excuse, but but I see that habitat rolling through those Santa Monica Mountains and I see them dead on the freeways and our highways, too. And, you know, I think nature has a right to LA, as LA has a right to nature. So gotta hold on to it.
Lindsay.
Thank you. I would agree. I think Supervisor Kewell has been a strong leader on this issue and we need to continue her leadership. We need to continue to work with the City of Los Angeles on ideas like the wildlife ordinance update that I know Councilmember Corretz has been really championing and making sure that not only are we protecting what is there, but recreating what we've lost. Sure, I guess P-22 can be used as an excuse, but I think it's a perfect example of how we can be doing better. And I think that we need to make sure that we're actually addressing these issues, not just kind of watching it for as amusement on our evening news to see where P-22 pops up next. We need to make sure that these environments are safe for wildlife and protected and that we are continuing to develop ordinances that protect the wildlife and recreate it. In my own community, I took the mayor's monarch pledge to help bring monarch butterflies back. We need to make sure that we're looking at all of the diversity of wildlife that exists there and making sure that we're protecting it through ordinances and partnership with local governments who have that land use power.
Thank you. All right. Last question.
Question. Our club, the West LA Democratic Club, along with the LA County Democratic Party, after extensive research, have taken positions to oppose the proposed project being touted as a restoration for the Bologna wetlands. Do you agree with this position? And if not, why not? And if you do agree with us, what will you do to stop the flow of money and persuade the state to withdraw the proposed project? More than 15 million in bond money and even more from the federal government has been spent just to plan this project so far.
Henry.
But I think you all have been brave by taking that position and I don't think it's been studied closely enough, especially when it comes to future use of the fossil fuel infrastructure that's being planned out there. I think we need to get serious about closing Playa and not using that wetland as a gas storage site. And I'm concerned that the plans are moving ahead without taking into account some of those factors, but also some of the habitat questions that, to me, I still, I think it warrants further study. So I think you're right to speak up and pump the brakes on it. There's a reason I haven't signed on to the proposal from the state. I'm the Resources Chair of the entire Senate. I oversee all coastal wetlands. Definitely got a lot of pressure on that, but I hope that you'll see my reticence and some of my hesitation as a signal that, you know, just because someone in power gives me a call and says this is a done deal and it's happening, that I'm going to sign off. That's not the kind of leader I want to be as a supervisor. I work for you, you know, and I'm going to be looking to you for that feedback and staying close to the ground on this work and not just cutting a deal behind the scenes and then giving it to you and telling you it's done. So I like that you've been a bit of a squeaky wheel and I think we can do better. I think we can do a better project there and on a lot of other places where things are moving forward. So hopefully I bring all my environmental experience and, you know, coastal development pushback and have a bill running right now to bring back the Coastal Commission's authority even on over-oil and gas and industrial use in those areas. So we're going to need a lot of different tools, but yeah, people are hungry for this land, so it's going to take some fighting.
Well.
It's clear your efforts are meaningful and important and I'm glad to see the position, not only the position that you've taken, but the action and the accountability that you've demanded to support this leadership position that you've taken. We need to make sure that we are protecting the Biona wetlands and making sure that the area is protected from overdevelopment, which I have a bit of experience doing as a local leader. We need to make sure that we are listening to the voices of people, not only in the neighborhood, but environmental experts. You know, this is where the difference between state legislation and local land use comes into effect. And I have experienced this time and again where we're being told by the state something that we need to be doing at the local level as if they know better than we do what to do in our own neighborhoods. We're living here each and every day. We're seeing the impact and we're seeing the threat of overdevelopment in places that we can't undo the damage once it's done. This would be one of those examples. We need to make sure that we're pushing back with everything that we've got, that we are listening to people in community, that we are turning to our experts in this area and that we are making sure that our voices are heard.
Well, okay, it's, oh my God, you guys, you know, really good answers. It's going to be, it's going to be interesting for us here, trying to see what we want to do. You know, I have one more question that came that I think is really interesting and different. And it is that the Board of Supervisors is the body responsible for the oversight of the LA, you know, county recorder and registrar and recorder to the account for any of the 300 million VSAP systems failures to deliver to the voters of LA County and what was contractually promised. Given that they have publicly claimed falsely that VSAP was open source and it still is not and it still does not meet encryption standards required in the contract or by the California voter system standards, do you think we can have confidence in them? And the Board of Supervisors hasn't taken any actions of this and many citizens and organizations have expressed no confidence. How will you address this issue when it comes up when you're elected? Please, Lindsay.
So we have to address this directly with the County Registarr's Office. I know that Beverly Hills raised an issue during one of the recent elections as we started to develop the screens instead of the paper ballots and what challenges that proposed for their community and their local election and their ballots and was cause for concern in that community. We need to make sure that we are fighting to do all that we can to ensure people have access to the ballot and that they can trust the system in which they're voting. I would like to see the ballot expanded to people who are undocumented, who live here and can vote and to help allow them to vote in local elections like happened in the city of New York. I think we need to make sure that we are creating a system that actually enfranchises people and engages immigrant communities in civic engagement that enfranchises people to participate in the government that governs them and to make sure that people see themselves reflected in that government. And that is best achieved by protecting one's right to vote and making sure that we can trust in that system. So I would work with the County Registarr's Office to see what audits, if any, have been conducted thus far and make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable in places that the registrar has fallen short.
Henry, thank you.
So there was an audit or at least an independent assessment of how the process went. I think in the 2020 election, we got results back sometime last year. And, you know, paper ballots, paper ballots, paper ballots, just say that, chaired elections committee and pushed through some mandatory paper ballot backups that hopefully will be somewhat of a stopgap, even if it's not, you know, fully affirming to everyone who does have concerns about VSAP. But voting centers being understaffed, e-poll books not being able to handle the county-wide system, the check-in process being a mess, huge lines, you know, mail-in balloting, confusion about drop centers. So the whole system needs, I mean, it's been underdone for a long time and this is the single largest voting base in the whole country as a county. So I'm not saying Dean Logan's job is easy, but, you know, we were working on sort of a capital improvement infrastructure, but I think it's going to be on the personnel side, too. I think we've got enough people invested and we don't just rely on a strictly volunteer workforce to sort of do that supplement. It's going to be a lot easier voting process. And I'd be willing to take a second look at VSAP. I think this audit, you know, it revealed some of the weaknesses there and I think that, you know, depending on how it goes in this off-cycle, that'll be the true test. This 2022 election's everything because we weren't in presidential. Let's see if this keeps running into the same problems and if we have to rethink it. But, you know, we've been denying the capital investment for too long and people, too. So we got to do better and I'm not putting it all on Dean's doorstep, but I would certainly go to battle and, you know, I got a lot of unfinished business in election reform to get done. So that's one of the reasons I'm really excited about this supervisory job because I don't have to just pass law in Sacramento. Got to like actually get the work done here on the ground. So that's the hope.
Well, then lead into your final two minutes with that.
Yeah, I mean, that's it. That's why I'm here. I mean, we can talk about, oh, Sacramento, you could say it's out of touch or what do they know? And working on $200 billion budgets over the last five years, negotiating those issues and learning how to really hold my ground when, you know, you're dealing with bullies on a very serious scale. But there is no replacement for fluency on the ground. And to carry some of these bills through when it comes to the climate change fight, closing Playa or closing Eliseo, it's going to take county leadership. I can audit LA County's mental health and homelessness program, which we didn't get deep into. But when I did that from up north, found $950 million sitting here not being spent in LA County. There's only so much I can do about it other than shake my finger or run for office. So that's why I'm doing it. We have serious work to do on the ground. I told you earlier, went through forced evictions, dealing with the pain of IHSS, watching nursing home workers deal with poverty on their own and have nowhere to go and a system that's squeezing them. I can't keep walking by these injustices and feel okay about my life in public service. I didn't predict that I'd be running for this office. This was not my career plan for my whole life. I just, I'm watching what's happening here and the machine politics of LA and I cannot bear the thought of this seat going to that same old kind of leadership. I think we need a different way. I think we need humility first. I think we need political generosity back in Los Angeles and to stand up for our city council members and help our colleagues and not sort of be the first to cut the ribbon, but maybe the first to do the hard stuff, first to get yelled at when people are upset or when their house burns down or somebody gets shot. I want to stand there and do that hard work. That's the vision. A new attitude about what LA can be and not this sort of castle mindset that I think has befallen the county for too long. We can't be aloof as leaders. People will know it and we have to meet them where they are. So it'd be a honor of my life to go get to work for you and thanks for hearing me out today.
Yeah, Lindsay.
Thank you very much and thank you for all of the questions, your very thoughtful engagement and your leadership on many of these issues. It's why your club's endorsement is so important and it's why the work that you do is transformational in all of the communities that you've touched. I'm running for this office because I was asked by, for many months, by many different people based on my record of experience and work on the local level, delivering results for people who need help the most, being able to connect local leaders to the services and support that they needed for their communities when they couldn't, they themselves even couldn't access the bureaucracy that was supposed to deliver. That kind of sums it up right there. If we're not delivering for the people who need it the most, if the people who are elected can't even access those services for the people to whom they're accountable, that just simply doesn't work. We need somebody who's actually had to deal with that on the ground. And as I mentioned earlier, this isn't just about writing a line item in a budget and hoping that the money ends up where it's supposed to. This is about direct accountability. This is about making sure that undocumented immigrants who are trying to access services are seen through that and supported through that system. It's making sure that all parts of this district are touched by the services of LA County and that no one is left out. And I've heard in different places that I've gone about people feeling they haven't gotten their fair share of service and support, including from the people who currently represent them. That's why they're looking for change, somebody who can come with a record of experience and deliver results on the ground, which is what I've done throughout my career, getting about 80% of our unhoused residents off the streets and into housing services or both year after year, working with community organizations and the sheriff's department. I'm working with the institutions that are already in the county to deliver on the issues where people want help the most. So it's that experience that will deliver results for people. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work for the people of LA County, the people who need it most, the people that we're all fighting for. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you both. Thank you so much. Oh my, okay. Good luck. As I say, the ballots will be going out at 5:45. And anyone here who is not planning on voting in the congressional and just wants to vote on the Board of Supervisors for some reason, I know one person was going to do that. You know, you can, but I would encourage everyone else to wait until, you know, to get your ballot ready. Wait until you hear from all the candidates and then mark your ballot, send it in and that'll be it. So good luck, both of you, and we'll be in touch. I'll let, if you're not on, we'll let, you know, your handlers know what's going on. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Gar. Good luck to you guys.
You're wonderful. Thanks. Okay, next are congressional candidates. We have State Senator Sidney Kamloger, who I hope is on, and former city council member Jan Perry and Culver City Mayor, oh my God, Daniel Lee. So we have Jan. I see Jan. Hi, Jan. And there's Daniel. And I know Sydney signed up, so we're waiting for Sydney. Is Sydney not here or do you not see her, Rad?
She is. She's present, but her video is not on. Senator Kamloger, if you could turn on your video, I can add you to the spotlight.
There she is. Perfect. Perfect. All right. So we have you. All three of you. Great. So we just finished a wonderful, wonderful dialogue with the Board of Supervisors candidates and I'm expecting the same from the three of you. If you were here in the beginning, I don't know, you will have a two-minute opening. Questions, we're giving you two minutes and closing two minutes. Ingrid Van Eckert there is our VP Ops will be alternating with me on asking the questions. Rad, our VP Political, will be giving you a one-minute sound. Do you want to do it, Rad? You'll have two minutes. He'll give you a one minute just to, you know, let you know, and then a 30-second and then two bells for time. Okay, so great. So why don't we start with Sydney? Why don't you start giving your, oh, are you coughing? Are you all right? Unmute. Rad?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Sydney, two minutes, please. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much and good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sidney Kamloger. I am the State Senator for the 30th Senate District and I'm a candidate running for the 37th Congressional District. As you all know, the Democratic Party is about building progressive coalitions because we can't get anything done if we don't work with people. And ultimately, that is what government is, systems of people. People writing policy, implementing policy and connecting constituents to policy in a way that works for them. And we are at a critical juncture in this country where our health is failing, the health of our economy, of our climate, of our mental, physical and reproductive well-being and the health of our democracy, which is why I am running. You are looking at a young girl who was born into a family of union workers, gay rights activists, Black Panther Party allies, artists, social workers and nurses and parents unafraid to stand up for what's right. And that is what I have been doing in my time working in the nonprofit world, in government and serving at the local and the state levels, developing learn-and-earn programs at LACC. connecting workforce investment boards to colleges, unions, and jobs, funding support for our DACA and foster youth students, standing up for our LGBTQ rights, probation reform, repealing unlawful gang enhancements, funding the Crisis Act, funding construction of new hospitals in our district, bringing green jobs and technology to our district, funding millions in affordable housing construction, bringing jobs to South LA and protecting our wildlife and animals. That's what I've been doing in my time in the state legislature on behalf of you. And I want to take those skills to DC and build the kind of coalitions that we need to restore the health of our country. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan.
Hey, everybody. I'm excited to be here and thank you for having me. I decided to run for this congressional district in January of this past year and have hit the ground running. Many of you may remember me as the Councilwoman of the Ninth District, where I brought in 90,000 new jobs with a community benefits agreement so that with everything that I did, I made sure not to leave my community behind and create pathways for people to pursue another trajectory. I built 7,000, I'm sorry, 6,000 units of affordable housing. 1,300 of those were dedicated towards people who were homeless or unhoused and had mental health issues. I proudly represented the Skid Row community for 12 years, and I look forward to uh doing that again uh on a much larger scale to bring a broader capacity to the continuum of care that needs to be continuously be be built out. I'm always afraid when people in elected office say we're going to end homelessness, we need to keep building to make sure people don't become homeless.
Okay, Daniel.
Thank you. I'm Culver City Mayor Daniel Lee. I'm also uh an Air Force veteran, social worker, and of course, a community organizer, which is how I come to you today. Uh, and I will just foreground my real reason for running is the climate crisis and the fact that we are not doing enough to address it. Uh, things like the Green New Deal and ending fossil fuel subsidies should be the floor of what we do if we take this crisis seriously. The most recent IPCC report really, really laid it all on the line. It basically said, we have the technology. We have the know-how. We know what the issue is. What we lack is the political will to get things done. In my time here in Culver City as a council member and now as mayor, we've gotten things done. We brought rent control to our city for the first time. We passed a property transfer tax to prevent flipping. Uh, we moved forward with the Mobile Crisis Response Unit as an alternative to law enforcement. We voted to close down the Inglewood Oil Field, and we're doing a lot of other things. We actually ended uh single-family zoning uh as well, and we're working to build as much housing as possible. This is the type of spirit and the type of getting things done. Real operational thing that I want to bring to DC, and I hope you will help send me there.
Well, thank you very much. So you ready? I'm going to start with the questions, and uh, as I said, you'll have two minutes each. And uh, and then Ingrid will take the next. So the first question, uh, which you just, you just uh refer to some of them, Daniel. So you start with this. What are the most urgent infrastructure and climate problems in your district today? And what would you prioritize to address these problems? Daniel.
So within our district, uh, there is a lot of neighborhood oil drilling, and there are a lot of actions that are being taken both by LA County and LA City following the lead of Culver City uh that I hope will address those. But the larger issue and the issue that people are talking about in a climate context, not in ways that I necessarily agree with, but I agree that we need to talk about this in a climate context, is housing. We need to make sure that people can live where they work. We need to make sure that people can live close to where they, you know, take their kids to the park or do social or entertainment type of things because one of the largest producers of greenhouse gases is just vehicle miles traveled. And I know it's Southern California. I know people are born in cars. It's something that happens in utero, but it's it's a practice that we need to get over. And there are, you know, enhancements coming to our district like the Crenshaw subway line. But we need to go further in the context of building more housing where people work so they don't have large commutes, but also improving our transportation infrastructure so that people can safely get to and from work, but also to and from play and other type of social activities.
Sydney.
Thank you. Well, um, in our district, our biggest issue is that we don't have enough affordable housing. And we also don't have enough um transit efforts that are conjoined. A lot of them are disjointed. You see some great things happening in little cities like Culver City. You see other things a little more just jointed across Los Angeles uh city in uh proper. And I think we have to have a coordinated capital infrastructure plan uh for the city, for the region, but also for the state, something that can be presented to the federal government so that it can be funded. You know, as it relates to the challenges that we have in the district, we should be building more decarbonized buildings. I was happy to be at the grand opening of one uh in Mar Vista, 50 units with uh rents that range from $300 to $1,200, totally electric and decarbonized. Uh, we need to be blending and braiding federal dollars to allow for more buildings like that to be built so that we can bring the cost down. We also need to make sure that we have a robust internet that goes everywhere across my district, but also across the country. Because if you are building, if you are trying to have your young people go to school, if you are trying to make ends meet by working at home and you do not have access to affordable in internet, which is infrastructure, you're going to have problems. We've shifted into a hybridized way of living, and we have an infrastructure that hasn't met the climate goals that we need to meet as well as how people are living and working today.
Jan.
Before we, before I begin, tell me the bell system again, so we know when to stop.
Okay, uh, one bell means you have a minute left. And then the second bell is 30 seconds, you know, just to give you a clue. And then double bells end, okay?
Got it, got it, got it. So uh, the greatest challenges I think we we face with respect to climate change in the 37th Congressional District, since I live near the Inglewood Oil Field, uh, hydraulic fracking is a major issue that I believe not only puts our our aquifers at risk, uh, and we don't have sufficient protection in place. It causes, in my opinion, cancer clusters. It's a, it's a fractious issue, if you will, but I think it can be mitigated by uh working much more aggressively to shut down the oil field and upskill workers uh so that there is no fear of displacement. That's important, the fear of displacement, the management of waste and the way that we do disposal, not only in the city and the county, needs to be upgraded and in there needs to be more infrastructure and newer technologies need to be used. The build-out of our light rail system in a post-COVID environment so that people will have the confidence to not only go back on the system, uh, but to use the system to reduce the amount of truck, truck, car traffic, I'm sorry, car traffic. Um, and then affordable housing uh programs for first-time home buyers so that we can give millennials the opportunity uh and the go beyond the aspiration of being able to build equity in their own communities to be able to live and work and uh, you know, maybe be able to live in this this county and the city, especially the district, without having to own a car so they can build a life here and we can continue to grow our economy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, yes. Second question, on extending voter rights, how would you work to address voter suppression, particular in underserved communities once you're in Congress?
Daniel.
Thank you for that. I I think for the most part, we need to bring some of the things that have become normalized in California to the national stage. As all of you know, under COVID, uh, the governor basically decided to send everyone a vote-by-mail ballot 30 days before the election starts. That is something that should happen nationally. It's something everyone who is eligible to vote, who is registered to vote, should receive a vote-by-mail ballot. It will help increase participation, uh, and it will cut down on a lot of the time uh that people have that they can't dedicate to voting. Though I will say on a much, much broader scale, I am much, very much in favor of having a national voter holiday. Uh, I think, you know, democracy is important, and if we actually believe in democracy, then we should want as many people to vote as possible. So in conjunction with having a vote-by-mail ballot sent to everyone, we should have a national voter holiday. And if you vote by mail early and you don't want to vote on the national voter holiday, that's another day off. Uh, I think if you look at a lot of the countries around the world, people generally have many more days off than Americans do. So another day off, I think, would help the country in general, and it's something that the workers across the country deserve.
Wait, I'm sorry, I got, have we, have you all answered this question?
No, Sydney and Jan have to go.
Yeah, Jan, why don't you go next and Sydney? I'm trying to make it, you know, back and forth, but I forget which order.
Yeah, that's okay. So uh, thanks for the question. And you know, we're very fortunate that we live in California and we don't have to engage in battles that they have to engage in in Texas and in Georgia, but we have to be mindful. Uh, and vote by mail is a very good thing, and I think it increases turnout. What we have to be mindful of is uh ballot harvesting and how that is conducted. We have to be mindful to make sure that if people decide they do want to go and vote in person and they want to use the voting machines, that all of the kinks are worked out of the program so that when people press a button, they actually get to vote within the race they're trying to vote for instead of skipping forward to another race. And so there needs to be a lot more voter education and outreach. It has to be constant and has to be nonstop so that people are comfortable voting any number of ways. Um, and that ballot boxes, should you choose to use them, have to be absolutely secure and we have to be able to uh make sure that people know that and can get to the point where they trust the system. We can uh lead by example, uh, not only here in our state and in the district, but across the country on the practices in which we engage, the way that we uh respect seniors, uh, allow people to have water while they're waiting in line. Yes, a holiday to vote is an excellent idea. The fact is that people, most people are working from home anyway. So I'm not sure how you would know the difference, uh, unless you're required to go online and and, you know, put your strokes in and clock in. So I think it would turn, increase our voter turnout and secure it even more.
Thank you, Sydney.
Thank you for the question. I do think that California has a great playbook that we can share with the rest of the country. I am really concerned I, uh, with how voting rights are being suppressed across this country. Um, and I think this is one of the reasons why we are now considered a backsliding democracy. I certainly support same-day registration and voting. That is a piece of legislation that we passed a few years ago. I support a national holiday for voting, of course. I also support allowing young people to pre-register at 16 and 17. So at the year, uh, once they turn 18, they automatically receive a ballot. I think we need to create national policy to do away with having to show your identification or your current address at the time of voting. That is being used in southern states to suppress the vote in black communities specifically. I think we have to recognize that there are different ways of voting, depending on if you're in a rural community or if you're in an urban community. I do not support voting machines without having a clear understanding of how the data is used and stored within those machines. We have seen far too many cyber attack breaks and also pernicious corporations using that data to do bad things. I think it is important for us to look at recall so that they are not weaponized that by folks that want to take away our democracy and our voice. And I also think we have to do more to incentivize poll workers and wanting to recruit and encourage folks to um help get out the vote and to work to manage the polls. I think that it is um a really important way to understand how democracy works. And I think we have undervalued and under-resourced those folks who do the great work of helping to make sure we have a safe place to vote once we have our elections.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Do you support student loan forgiveness? I know it's a, it's a big topic. And if so, do you think President Biden should use his presidential powers to abolish student debt? And what other actions should he take if Congress cannot act? And why don't we go, uh, Jan, Sydney, Daniel on this?
Yes, I support the elimination of student debt. And I I think uh in order to get it passed, I would even add just a little sweetener, which would be um, maybe for more recent graduates, ask them to do a year with AmeriCorps to be able to give back to community-based organizations and nonprofits deeply embedded in people's communities in in return for forgiveness of their debt. Uh, I was struck by the fact, I think I read an article that President Obama and Mrs. Obama or the First Lady within recent period of time finished paying off their student debt. Uh, I mean, if they have to go through it, then there's something wrong there. There's very, something wrong with that picture. I I I I think it should be eliminated because I think it will free young people up so that they will have the opportunity, they're having a hard enough time getting one job with benefits. Many of them have to have two and three jobs and still don't have benefits. And if you're saddled with student debt and you eliminate that, at least that will give them a running chance to be able to, you know, get a foot or a toe-hold into the economy. Thank you.
No, you still have. Didn't adjust, uh, address the President Biden and.
Yes, President Biden, yes, absolutely should use his powers, uh, executive powers to make this a reality. And I think that he and Bernie Sanders talked about that when they were running in the primary, which is how he, you know, at least reduced their level of acrimony because he, he did articulate that that Bernie was onto something special. And that's why young people were so excited about Bernie.
Yep. Okay, Sydney.
Thank you for the question. And yes, absolutely, he should have in fact done it a while ago. You know, I support, one of the things I worked on when I was at the Los Angeles Community College and we sort of continued it in the state legislature was trying to make community college tuition-free. That is something that I support. I actually think all public education should be free regardless of if you are in K through 12 um, or if you're going to college or even secondary um higher education. We see this happening in other Western countries where you can go and get a graduate degree or a PhD for free so that folks are not leaving with a degree and saddled with debt. You know, in the Build Back Better Plan, uh, there was a proposal to offer um retention grants for those folks that are entering into certain industries and sectors to pay them almost similar to AmeriCorps and Peace Corps, but where you could actually get some grants to subsidize your entry into a particular industry or sector. And I think we should be doing that, especially in the field where we are seeing a mass exodus of the workforce. I also think very similar to the GI Bill, we should be offering homeowner grants to young folks who have just graduated and are entering into certain fields so that they can have funds to help them secure a home that they want. Most folks are unable to do that because of the debt, because they can't afford to make those kinds of ends meet with the income. If we want to eradicate poverty, we have to meet it head-on by making sure that folks are able to leave college or get a degree and go into the workforce, not saddled in debt.
Okay.
Jan, thank you for the question. For me, this is a little bit of a complex question, uh, not just in the context of student debt, which I am 100% in favor of getting rid of. I think it would be one of the best stimulus policies that we could put in place, not only for millennials and Generation Z, uh, but for Generation X and for some baby boomers who I've met who still have student loans. I think it would be fantastic. But for me, I think the bigger issue is for the Democratic Party in general. Things aren't looking the best for the midterms. Uh, I I think this would be a incredibly great strategic move. Uh, I, I think this would be a incredibly great strategic move for the president uh, to really create the type of energy, uh, and interest that the Democrats need to actually retain the House of Representatives. And to really, you know, get a stronger majority in the Senate. Uh, I, I, I think not doing it does not serve anyone. These student loans in general were created as means to allow more people to attend universities. Um, and as you know, some of, uh, my competitors have said, they've ended up being a means to drag people down to prevent them from buying houses, to prevent them from buying, you know, cars, electric cars, uh, to prevent them from doing the things that they want to do in life. Uh, and multiple generations have been victim to this and have amassed massive debt and credit card debt as a consequence of having to pay six, seven, eight hundred dollar student loans on a regular basis. Uh, if we really want to give our economy a shot in the arm, we will erase student debt as quickly as we can.
All right, thank you. Do you support spending two-thirds of our country's budget on defense? If not, how would you reallocate the funds if the defense budget could be cut?
Jan, Daniel, Sydney.
If I could reallocate our defense budget, I would talk, I would spend money on real police reform. And, uh, throughout the country, uh, I would spend the money, uh, to buy down the cost, cost of healthcare. So we can have Medicare coverage for all people, uh, and fulfill the promise of ACA or Obamacare. And, uh, make it easier for people to, uh, have lower monthly payments and lower their sky-high deductibles. Um, and then rescuing uh, young people and their families in a post-COVID recovery for what happened with respect to remote learning in terms of mental health and wellness issues. Um, not only for the kids who were out there on the gangplank, uh, with due to lack of technology or reduced technology, given your zip code, uh, and the impact it had, not only in kids in terms of uh, uh, educational disparity, but the impact on their parents. Uh, there's no concrete way or plan in place that I know of yet to replace lost schooling and learning opportunities. Uh, so I would like very much to focus on that, and then, uh, um, on a much larger scale, uh, to create more units to get unhoused people uh, off of the street as quickly as possible with services on-site and to strengthen the continuum of care. Uh, so that we can keep people in a bed or keep people in an emergency housing situation for permanent supportive housing.
Thank you. Sydney?
Yes, so I would totally cut that. Um, it's way too much. It has been. It keeps going up and shame on the federal government. Of course, I would use it to make sure that healthcare is affordable and accessible and free to everyone, as well as public education. Of course, I would use it to roll back things like Article thirty-four, so that we could actually have federal government fund social housing programs that work. Of course, I would use it, um, to make sure that we were investing in clean energy, so that we still do not have to be addicted to fossil fuels. But I would do other things that we actually don't normally talk about in forums like this. If you could believe it, and I can't believe I'm saying this, but I would put more money into the IRS, which has lost a ton of workers. And so now what's happening is those workers are chasing after folks who don't make any money and are leaving those that make a ton of it, uh, to not have to pay their taxes on time, if at all. I would fund the FDA. Thousands upon thousands of young people and babies are actually dying each year because we are not doing enough to test the food. So if you don't like Monsanto's making the food that you're eating, those fake tomatoes, we should be funding the FDA. We should be funding the Department of Energy, so that we can support resiliency grants and alternative energy grants to incentivize that kind of research and development. The National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, so that we can heal our waters across this country. The National Endowment for the Arts and our Veterans Affairs Administration, so that we can help veterans in housing, stay healthy, and work with their mental and substance abuse issues if they have it. There are so many things that we could and should be funding, that we could use those dollars for, that are very rarely talked about, but are incredibly important. I have to say, at the very least, we should be getting coal out of the federal government. Right now, our federal buildings are actually heated with coal, and we could use that money to stop that and begin to use clean, green energy. To also buy more land, so that we can protect our wildlife and our ecological habitats. Ding ding!
Oh, Daniel.
Yeah, of course, I, I believe in cutting the military budget, uh, but one of my favorite books is actually called, uh, The Spirit Level. And it's really a compendium of research studies that really relate why societies that are more equal perform better in the context of physical health outcomes, mental health outcomes, and gross national happiness. Uh, in that context, I know a lot of people have heard a whole lot about the UBI or, you know, for universal basic income. Uh, I've been hearing more and thinking more and being convinced more about universal basic services. Uh, so that unlike universal basic income, which is really a set amount of money, uh, that people get on a monthly basis, um, universal basic services are sort of inflation-proof. And that would be things like universal basic housing. Uh, treated housing as a human right and making sure that everyone is housed. Uh, and that expense does not encumber their ability to live the life the way that they want to. Uh, things like, you know, universal basic health coverage, not health insurance, universal health coverage, uh, so that everyone is actually covered. Um, most of the developed countries in the world have had universal health coverage that is not insurance for nearly half a century. Uh, the fact that we don't in the United States is, i- is disappointing and shameful. Uh, if we were to cut the military budget, which is something that I think we should do, we should use it to affirm the fact that housing is a human right, but also that healthcare is as well.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, next question. How would you work to check growing corporate power in the United States? And to follow that, then how would you address the growing divide between rich and poor in the United States? Uh, Daniel, you wanna start, then Sydney, then Jan?
So in, in the context of growing corporate power, uh, for the last, uh, ten years, I've been on the board of, uh, Move to Amend. And our focus is passing a constitutional amendment that says corporations are not people and money is not free speech. Uh, unlike some of the other amendments that are operative in Congress, uh, like HJR One uh, and others, uh, our amendment focuses on both money and politics and corporate constitutional rights. Because these are the means through which corporations exercise power in our democracy and often dictate. Uh, and through the guise of things like Alec, uh, which writes legislation, uh, for state representatives uh, and other think tanks that are basically one hundred percent pro-corporate. So if we pass a constitutional amendment, uh, we can take the first step towards limiting corporate power. I'm sorry, I forget the second part of your question.
The second part is, um, then how would you address the growing divide between rich and poor in the United States?
The growing divide, I think, can be addressed, uh, through what I just talked about in the context of universal basic services. Uh, but beyond just shrinking the military budget, one of the other things that we could look towards uh, to provide subsidies for people for housing, for healthcare, and for other basic needs, should, which everyone should have, is getting rid of fossil fuel subsidies, getting rid of subsidies for some of the largest corporations in the world. Uh, like Amazon, like a number of Elon Musk companies. Uh, a lot of these companies basically use the infrastructure that the American people pay for uh, to make themselves wealthy. And then in addition to that, they get subsidies, uh, for things like traveling to space, and they get tax refunds. Uh, we need to restructure our tax laws, so that if you do get subsidies from the United States, you don't get a tax refund. Uh, you already got something that belongs to other people, that belongs to the people.
Thank you, Sid.
Thank you, uh, for that. Well, quite frankly, I, I think we have to tax the rich. I mean, obviously, I think that Citizens United needs to be overturned. I think we need to do a better job of not just socializing our services, but stop asking poor people and working families to compete for services that they deserve and are due. And oftentimes, there is some sort of poor Olympics that government, um, asks people to participate in. You know, do you have to fill out this application once every four months? If you don't, you will be kicked off of the system. You know, hey, we only have a amount of money for X number of people, so if you don't get in um, at this particular time or through this window, then you will be denied services. Services that you need, services that you deserve, I think services that the federal government is obligated and should be obligated to make available. I also think, and, um, that we have to be focusing on regenerative wealth. Um, that's why I support reparations. I supported the bill to allow us to have the task force. I support what they are doing. I support efforts like Bruce's Beach, where we are returning land to rightful descendants. I think we should be looking more aggressively at how to democratize access to capital. And I think we should be taxing. We should be taxing high-income individuals. We should be taxing multinational corporations. If you book more than five hundred million or a billion dollars in profits, you have to pay your fair share. I think we should be closing the tax gap, you know, what is owed versus what is collected. There is a huge gap between the two, and the federal government should be squaring that up. And we should be looking at tax stock buyback. That is the scheme that a lot of executives use uh, to enrich their bottom line, and it is something that we should be taking a stand on and stopping. I also believe that if you are in government, if you are in Congress, you should not be able to, you know, participate in owning and trading stocks, uh, because it's going to have a serious conflict of interest, uh, with you and some of the votes that you may take. Um, but I think we have to do more to democratize and make more accessible access to capital. The last thing I'll say is we have to look at bias in our systems. Like home valuation policies, because oftentimes the home is someone's biggest asset.
Thank you. Jan?
Uh, thank you very much. So with respect to corporate accountability in politics, I know there is a propos- proposal pending at the federal level for uh, matching funds for running for office, and I believe it's a proposal that is a six-to-one match, uh, in federal races. I think that's a good idea. The city of Los Angeles has used that for many years. And while it's leveled the playing field for, uh, candidates, the one area that it hasn't had enough sunlight is in the area of dark money, or the local level, what we would call independent expenditures. And independent expenditures are where corporate and special interest money creeps in at all levels, not only at the federal level, but in all races. They're largely unregulated, because some may argue that they're free speech, and so they're still able to operate pretty freely, as long as they disclose what they're doing, uh, within a short timetable. So that, that has to change. I think that has to continue to be litigated and pushed back on, because that's where corporations will go, where there's a crack. Um, as for the growing divide, uh, my approach would be, uh, the use of enhanced infrastructure financing districts to take, uh, tax, gen- tax, property tax revenue that is generated through the construction of market rate, luxury housing, areas that are generating a lot of proper property tax revenue, and reinvest them to build housing, to build infrastructure, to create net new jobs in areas that are not generating the, the commensurate level of property tax revenue, given the density or the rate of poverty within a given district. Um, is that my second bell, then? Oh, I still have more time, thanks. All right. So I would do that by mobilizing, uh, uh, the Department of Commerce Economic Development uh, authority and probably Housing and Urban Development to create these, uh, uh, financing districts with Community Reinvestment Act authorities to really focus on, you know, old infrastructure, to redo it, uh, to renovate it, to rehabilitate it, and to build new, and to create more housing units at all income levels and to bring them online. Thank you.
All right. I believe that's the last question.
No.
Uh, the question is, right?
Yeah, and then there's another, uh, there's another after that.
Okay. Do you support Medicare for All? Do you support the great, the Green New Deal? Why or why not?
Oh. Okay. I hope you'll do that, England. Okay, um, Dan, Sydney, Dan.
Yes, I do support Medicare for All, uh, because I think it will, again, create a level, level playing field, so that all families will have the opportunity to pursue the, the greatest help possible, uh, which will enable, uh, neighborhoods, families to become more stable. Uh, and there's nothing but benefits there. As far as the Green New Deal is concerned, I am supportive of that. In fact, I've been working on a new green deal down in Long Beach. Um, that's a goods movement project, uh, with new technology. And not only will it, will it eliminate truck traffic on the seven-ten, uh, but it will upskill the workers, uh, from, uh, IBW and from the Teamsters uh, and people in that area who are in the Community Benefits Plan and Clean the Air. Uh, that's part of what the, part of what the Green New Deal intends. It doesn't displace people. It embraces technology and then takes it to the next level. Uh, and then, of course, the federal funding would need to be there to make sure that people are properly upskilled, so that nobody gets displaced, nobody gets disenfranchised, and that as many people as possible can benefit uh, from implementing the Green New Deal and introducing new forms of, of, uh, energy usage, infrastructure to move product, uh, from one of our economic generators, one of the greatest ones of Southern California, which is the port.
Sydney?
So yes, I support the Green New Deal. In fact, I, uh, was a co-author to now as Attorney General Bonta's Green New Deal bill that he put through the California Legislature. I think we have, you know, an opportunity to do big things and little things. Uh, as Daniel mentioned, the UN's IPP, IPCC report came out, and quite frankly, we're not gonna be here in about twenty years if we don't get our act together. I think we have a pretty good playbook coming out of California. We admit, we contribute less than one percent of the global admissions, and so while we need to do better, I think we can also show the country and the world how we can move to healing Mother Earth. I think we need to be supporting environmental and climate justice block grants, a green workforce. We should be subsidizing green efficiency investments for regular people like you and me. We should be making sure that any federal agency that has fleets, that they should be EV. We should be supporting windfall profit tax, the bill that is, uh, circulating now, and an Energy Security and Independence Act that will allow us to really re- uh, research and invest in domestic green energy. I was a co-author on the Medi-Cal for All, so yes, I do support that. And I hope we get back to the business of making something like this a reality. We have a mental health crisis on our hands. Fifty-one percent of young girls have had suicidal thoughts or have tried to commit suicide. We have a responsibility to invest in behavioral health. We have a responsibility to make sure that our Medicaid programs work for everyone, that we are able to reimburse for services like doulas and midwines, for the Crisis Act and as well as street medicine. Um, there are so many opportunities for the federal government, once again, to blend and to braid our funding sources and to look at how to achieve and offer waivers, so that states like California and others can do the work that we have been trying to do, where we have been hamstrung by the federal government. But we need to be investing more in healthcare. We need to be driving down the cost of our pharmaceuticals as well. Thank you.
Daniel?
So yeah, I passionately support, um, the Green New Deal. I do feel like it is the floor, uh, on which we build a sustainable, uh, future. But we need to, uh, we need to stop talking about it. Uh, it's, it's been quite some time since it's been introduced. Uh, and every, you know, every few months, every year, the IPCC releases a new report. Uh, there's a new COP, there's COP twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, where people get together and pat themselves on the back. where people get together and pat themselves on the back about what they're going to do about the climate. And then they go home and don't do anything about the climate. We need to move towards action. And we need to, you know, realize that we are in an emergency. I know a lot of people don't like the wartime mindset or metaphors, but we need to treat it like it's a war, like we are being attacked because it is an existential crisis. And it's something that we need to rally all of our resources to address if we want to live as humans in some way similar to the way that we live right now. I'm also passionate, supportive of Medicare for All, had the privilege of speaking at the March for Medicare for All this summer and a number of other single payer events. I am also a chronic pain sufferer with various immunocompromised diseases. So I know firsthand the difference between having normal healthcare that you have to pay for and having something that's similar to universal healthcare. As elected officials, we have better healthcare that is included. It's part of our job. As a council member and as mayor, my healthcare has been eons better than it was when I was paying a lot. And I believe everyone deserves that, not just me.
Yeah. Well, so you've all answered that, yes. Now we'll go to possibly the last question, not sure. We have a couple more, but we're trying to stay on theme here. So this is interesting. We'd like to know your thoughts concerning US intervention, intervention in the Russian invasion of Ukraine. Okay. And let's start with Daniel here. Go to Sydney and then Jan.
I think for the most part, even though, I will be honest, I am occasionally a critic of President Biden. I think he's actually taken the right steps in, in this vein. I, I think for the most part, it's easy to say we, we should send troops to help out the Ukrainians. But if we do, we risk expanding the war. We risk expanding the war and involving many other countries, including our NATO allies and including China. That is not the type of thing that we should want to see in the world. So by working to pass sanctions that are targeted, not generalized, but are targeted to Putin allies, Putin's reserves. You know, we can, we can create a bottleneck that will cut off resources both for Putin himself and for the Russian government. If we were to send troops and if we were to intervene, the war would expand and it would not just be Ukrainians that we have this large amount of empathy for. It would be Americans. It would be French folks. It would be people, it would be Germans. It would be people closer to the nexus of action. So in the context of the war in Ukraine at the moment, I believe that our president has taken the appropriate steps. And I think we should stay on that course. Because if we, if, if we intervene, we inflame the conflict and there will be more lives lost.
Sydney.
Yes, thank you for the question. So I certainly think that Biden has been doing a good job. I mean, this is a complicated and nuanced issue, to say the least. Foreign policy usually is. I support the sanctions. I encourage more. You know, 80% of Russian transactions include the dollar. So these sanctions are working. Their economy is down by at least 20%. And the squeeze is being felt by the other oligarchs who are hiding Putin's money. I think we should not miss this moment because the West has now rallied together to support Ukraine. And so how do we build on this kind of diplomacy and this collaboration to make sure that it continues after this is over? You know, I signed on as a co-author to a bill authored by Senator McGuire that demands that CalPERS pulls our assets out of Russia. I would ask that other states do the same as well. I support ascending in humanitarian aid. I think we have to realize that we may have to continue to do that after this is over because we are going to have to be part of the recovery for the Ukrainians. I think we should also be looking at China, which I know houses a lot of our debt and is also a very complicated relationship. But we have an obligation to try to figure out a way to make globalization work for everyone and to not allow ourselves to be intimidated by other powers that are essentially working against us to hinder democracy and to hinder the West. There is a reason why they have been in concert together. And it's also a reason why China has been really silent. At the end of the day, Putin is dangerous and he must be contained. And we must make sure that this is not a disease that persists and that metastasizes across this globe. But if we got off of fossil fuel, then we wouldn't have to worry about it.
Jan.
As much.
You know, I saw a post, I think it was yesterday, that said the expression never again, never again is now. We need to learn from our history and we need not to forget that because all of the elements are now present before us and we're living through this. But we need to do everything that we can to help the Ukraine without stepping this up into World War III. So that means figuring out a way to get them weapon support, to continue to work all of the diplomatic channels and to keep sanctions moving forward and keeping our Western Europe, United States coalition strong. And I believe the United States has to take the lead in creating this multilateral approach. I believe that President Biden has done that very well. And we need to continue to step up sanctions. And we have to make sense of this, that Europeans don't get weary of the sanctions. Our allies in Europe, it's harder for them than it is for us. They already pay me what we do in fuel and rely on Russia much more than we do. So this is going to be key to holding our coalition together. China and India need to be managed as well. And they need to stop propping up the Russian government. In particular, you know, that diplomacy can intervene there. We need to have a strong presence and a continued open dialogue to, on the record, to call them out and make them accountable at much higher levels and continue to increase so that we can keep this from blowing up to full scale war. But war crimes are being committed before our very eyes. And for us to deny that reminds me very much of what my parents used to tell me about what happened during World War II.
Okay, good points, really good points. Yeah, what a time, right? This time, I keep thinking like, where are we this century? You know, I mean, it's just amazing what is going on, what has gone on. Just like in the past few years, it's, it's really scary time. And a time that will definitely go down in history. What happened to what, the 60s, weren't they kind of a, oh no, wait, there was Vietnam. The 50s, oh wait, there was Korea. Oh, wait, the 40s, you know what? Maybe this isn't so crazy. I mean, maybe this is the history of our world, our country. Okay. Well, a reminder, ballots have gone out. Hold them if you can. We've got a few more minutes here. We want to hear our, the final thoughts from the candidates. Yeah. I'm just thinking if we should ask one more question. Are you ready for one more question or do you want to wrap? It's up to you guys. Daniel.
Well, I would love to, but I, I'm actually at another event, so.
Oh, well, okay then. All right. So then why don't you do your final two minutes? And then we'll just vamp for five minutes while we wait for the ballots to all go in. Okay, Sydney.
Okay. So I think I went first the first time.
So you want to go?
I mean, I don't mind if people don't mind, but.
Why? Just because you were at another event. I was being, I was being gracious.
Oh, you're so sweet. Okay, I will go, I will go. Well, thank you again for the opportunity, West LA Democratic Club. It is always good to see you all today. It is always good to see you. You know, I went to church today and a pastor talked about how amazing it is to live in a country where you can worship publicly and in peace and how that isn't true in other parts of the world. And that is true. But that kind of democracy is in peril. And this race for Congress is not about me and some next step for me. It's about all of us and how we heal and reclaim a healthy democracy that is just and fair for everyone. So where you, how you unionize and organize, how you support labor, how you're able to love who you want, making it okay to say the word gay, how we are able to teach students the truth in school without fear of persecution, how we are able to follow science and not propaganda in order to keep people healthy, how we are able to make our own decisions about our own reproductive health and not have to live in fear or do something that is unsafe or potentially fatal, and how we are able to vote safely and in peace. All of that and more is at stake with this race. I have a track record of passing good progressive policy, of representing and helping my constituents, of keeping the state government, keeping it real with the state government and making sure that people show up and do the work that they are supposed to do for my constituents. And I have the endorsement of the woman currently in this seat, Congresswoman Karen Bass, who with a number of other activists, union leaders, elected officials and progressives, know me, have seen me at work, believe in my ability to get things done, know that I tell the truth and have the confidence that I will not forgive you and that I will bring all of us to Washington DC. My goal is to bring folks from the margins to the center. And my goal is to bring the center of power from DC to the West, to the 37th Congressional District. Thank you, and I would be honored to have your support.
Thank you. Daniel.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say thank you once again for having me here today. As I said, I'm running in this race because of the climate crisis, because of our relative inaction and the context of addressing the climate crisis. This isn't a game for me. This isn't about career advancement. It's about advancing the type of policy that will help us continue to exist as a species. The climate crisis, along with income inequality, are the crises of our age. If we don't address both of these, then we will have permanent refugees at our borders from around the world. We will have cities that are underwater. I am from the South. I grew up in Pensacola, Florida, but was born in Alabama. And I've had the opportunity to go to Louisiana, New Orleans mostly, but also other places. And if you look at time lapse maps of Louisiana in the last 20 years, nearly 5% of it has disappeared. This is the future of our planet if we don't address the climate crisis. People's land, people's lives being ruined by our inaction. This is why I am running in the 37th District. This is why I want your vote. I would appreciate it. I have a track record of success. We've done a lot here in Culver City in a short period of time. But I am committed to doing much, much more on the federal level for many more people because I believe that the stakes are that high. And I believe that we need people who recognize the stakes to lead us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan.
Thank you very much. And I just want to close with a couple of things that I think are really important, that I have led trailblazing initiatives at the local level in the area of permanent supportive housing with project labor agreements and community benefits agreements. I dealt with the protection of water in South Los Angeles by creating two large manmade wetlands out of concrete so that people could have protected aquifers, have open space, green space, and to bring nature back into densely populated urban areas in the city. I am a leader and a community leader. I have not stopped advocating for the community even while I have been out of office as a general manager in workforce development, as the executive director of not one but two nonprofits. So I continue to do the work, the grassroots work and earn grassroots support with years of experience and a dedicated track for getting things done. And what I know to be true is that people need someone at the federal level who can take their local issues and translate them into that federal funding, federal earmarks, implementation and development. I can take all of this knowledge that I have, and I have 30 years' worth of knowledge, knowledge, pragmatism, production of results and deliverables or programs are developed and that they actually serve the people they are intended to serve and that they don't sit on a shelf and that they become fodder for conversation. So thank you very much. I would be honored to have the support of the West Side, West LA Democratic Club. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you and thank everyone. It's been great. It's going to be a hard choice as usual. As you all know, you need 60% of the vote to get our endorsement. So good luck. I don't know, ballots are out. There are four minutes left to vote. There are two errors, so if you can bear with me, maybe talk amongst yourself, as they used to say. And let me check the ballots because I got a note that there were two that, that didn't, that they had errors on, so I have to find it. Okay. Let's see. The fact is, I don't see any errors. And this is what's crazy. And it says I have to fix the errors. And I don't know why. So. Sorry. Sorry. People want to talk or something? You can. I'm just working on it. I don't know why this happens every time. You know, but apparently this is sort of par for the course in doing these. There's always something that goes wrong. All right, here's one I'm going to see. Okay. Now it seems fine. So we have two minutes. Let me see what's happening here. There are some people who haven't voted. I don't know if you've gotten your ballots. Let me see. Marsha Hamscom didn't get your ballot, but I did get your vote. Thank you. Marsha had a very strange thing happen with her ballot and I think it may be her server, not election buddy. I think these people aren't here. Daniel, Connie Thomas, you haven't voted. You better hurry. Or maybe you did because the last three votes are never counted for some reason. Francis Hasenfount. Joan Gallagher says you haven't voted. Mary Jack hasn't voted. Sydney Comlager hasn't voted, but I bet she did. Nikki Legacy hasn't voted. So that's what I, who I have who has not voted, who I do believe are on the call. You all have one minute if you haven't voted to vote. I'll check, check my inbox as well. Think it might be too late. I think it's done. I actually. Think it might be too late. I think it's done. I actually did vote, but I voted. I did mine by by text. Let's see what happens. I will see if they've closed the voting now. I'm checking. I'm on the Zoom. All right, just give me, I will count it. Tell me who you're voting for. And the Board of Supervisors. Okay, great. That's all right. That's okay. Bye. Okay, that's it. Poor me, thanks. Thanks, Sarah. It really is, it is not easy. You have no idea, you know, and you're dealing with all this technical stuff and like Marsha's server doesn't accept the election buddy. Some people, I don't know, I don't know what happens. I do what I can do, you know. So let me check. I do have two people who gave me their their votes. Angrid, did you get your ballot? Angrid? I don't know. I seem to be the only one back here. Okay, let me check. Let me see what the results are. Go. Results. Results, what is the results? Oh, okay. It looks like for the LA County Board of Supervisors, Lindsay Horvath with the one two extra votes that were told to me, were texted to me, so I I have the answer. So Lindsay would have nine votes. Henry has twenty-three votes. So you needed sixty percent to get the endorsement. So Henry Stern is our endorsed candidate. For Congress, we have let's see, extra two votes for, all right, for Congress, Sydney Comlager had seventeen votes plus two, which would be nineteen votes. Daniel Lee had five votes and Jan Perry had eight plus one, that would be nine votes. So I believe we do not have a sixty percent here because of no endorsement had one vote. Also, so before the two extra votes for Sydney and the one extra vote for Jan, Sydney had fifty-four point eight percent. I don't think that's, with those two votes, it makes sixty percent. But I don't have a calculator with me. I mean, I could do it. Can somebody do this for me, please? I'm going to, I'll tell you what the exact. Okay, so here's what it is. We had in this race, we had thirty four votes tallied and and one abstention. So there's thirty-four votes. So how many votes then do you need for sixty percent out of thirty-four votes? Somebody do that? I can do that. You would need twenty votes for sixty percent. Sydney had nineteen. Daniel had five. Jan had nine. No endorsement had one. So for Congress, there is no endorsement. There's no consensus. We don't have an endorsement. We have no consensus on Congress. We have we have a endorsement for Henry Stern for Board of Supervisors. So that's it. I thank you all for joining us. And good luck, all you candidates. Good luck in the, in the election. I know you're all working really hard and we appreciate it, and we really appreciate you coming here and joining us. And with that, I will say, good night. Thanks again for coming. And see you next time. I I we still have Controller, Board of Supervisor, pardon me, Controller, City Attorney and the judges to do, and we'll have to set them up the first week in May because I'm going away for a week at the end of the month. And I'll be back ready to hopefully get that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Jan.
Good evening.
Very much.
It was great. Take care.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.